Okay, hello everyone, we're gonna start the study session for the exam one study guide. And we're not gonna go over every item, but just I'll go through what you need to focus on. But let's start out with any questions that you have. On the exam. And we have one person in the room right now, so I imagine most of you are watching this recording. So the exam is equivalent to fifty multiple choice, but really it's thirty multiple choice plus two ten matching questions. And it shouldn't be too difficult if you review the study guide and the material, you should be fine. Most everyone is doing fairly well on the quizzes. And the documentary quizzes as well, so I'm not too worried. So we are looking first at chapter two, the constitution, and something to remember. Is what led to it. And you've heard the phrase, I'm sure no taxation without representation. And the context of the situation was the French and Indian War with the with Great Britain was very expensive and there was taxes on colonial goods and trade restrictions to protect British businesses and that was perceived as at the expense of the colonists, so they weren't too happy with that. The committees of correspondence build public opinion against Britain. When the colonists start to rebel, you have the coercive acts or were called intolerable acts. Quartering of British troops, that means troops living with with the colonists families and their homes without their choice. And know this between the difference between the first Continental Congress and the second Continental Congress Congress. So the first Continental Congress in September seventeen seventy four. Had the Declaration of Rights and Resolves for English Cooperation, this was more centered on staying within the British Empire. Whereas the second Continental Congress, despite the olive branch petition. Generally was more focused on leaving the British Empire. You also had the common sense, the book by Thomas Paine, that was in half the households making the case for independence. Declaration of Independence, it was a committee of five authors, but Thomas Jefferson is recognized as the principal author. John Locke, the philosopher, know that was very instrumental in providing a lot of the philosophical background for the Declaration of Independence with the social contract theory and life liberty and property or life liberty and happiness. Know the problems under the Articles of Confederation. So that was the first incarnation of the United States of America. The federal government had no power to tax, had no power to regulate commerce, no executive to implement laws, no executive branch to to implement laws, no judicial system at the federal level, everything was at the state level. And no coercive power over the states, you had Che's Rebellion. And that showed the weakness of the federal government in quelling that. So know the difference between the two plans that were set forth for a new constitution for the United States. You had the Virginia Plan, this was a large state, large again by population. They wanted a powerful central government, they wanted representation based on population. The New Jersey Plan, this was a small state, small population, wanted a weak central government. Something's more similar to the Articles of Confederation and representation, representation by state, not by population. You had the compromise, which was Connecticut Plan, which of course gave birth to the bicameral legislature, House of Representatives based on population and Senate two for each state. You also had part of the compromise. Being the three fifths. Plan for the southern states, this was brought forth by Madison to make sure that the southern states with a very large slave populations would get more representatives, but only at three fifths. The rate of a white person. Slavery, there was no limits for twenty years, but then all slaves could slaves could no longer be imported. In eighteen oh eight. However, slavery as an institution continued, though they would have to be from the states. Okay. Know what federalism is. Understand the separation of powers. Between executive branch legislative branch additional branch checks and balances. The powers that each branch has to check the other branch. Article one in the constitution spells out the legislative branch, the enumerated powers enumerated, meaning it's listed there. And then you have the necessary and proper clause called the elastic laws, which gives birth to implied powers, may it may not be enumerated in the constitution, but could be interpreted later either in law or through the judiciary and precedent with Supreme Court rulings. Article two is executive branch commander in chief. Now the president is a powerful figure. Authority to make treaties, federal appointments, etc. And then article three, the judicial branch or judiciary. Articles four through seven, full faith and credit supremacy clause amendment process. And know the the birth of the federalist, the anti-federalist, so federalist supported a strong central government. These were generally from higher populated states and cities. And anti-federalist supported a weak central government generally from lower populated states and rural areas. Okay, methods for changing the constitution. So the formal method is to propose a new amendment. And know how to do that. So two thirds members of both houses, that's House of Representatives and Senate. Or two thirds of state legislatures to propose an amendment. That doesn't mean it passes, it's just to propose it. The two thirds of state legislatures has never happened, it's always been through the Congress. Now to ratify the amendment, once it's been proposed. Through the two thirds super majority vote, then it has to be ratified and it has to be ratified by three quarters of state legislators, which right now is thirty eight of fifty states, which is which is difficult. And that's why we only have twenty eight amendments over all these years. Generally, there's a time limit put on ratification, either seven or ten years. And Supreme Court cannot rule. That a ratified amendment is unconstitutional, because now it is the constitution. So informal methods, and we're gonna get into this more later semester, the judicial interpretation or judicial review, so Supreme Court rulings, for instance. They may remove laws that they are deemed unconstitutional. This is very important, the Bill of Rights, these are the civil associated with civil liberties. As we went through the semester, it was pounded into everyone's head from the readings and lectures, etc. So know the Bill of Rights, I'm not gonna read through each one, just understand the basics of each one. Because you're gonna need to. That's very important and hint hint could be a matching question. So federalism enumerated powers, these are listed directly explicitly in the constitution for the federal government, and that's to coin money, conduct foreign relations, provide for military, declare war, collect duties and taxes. Then you have the necessary and proper clause, know your clauses and what they mean. And necessary proper means that they can enact laws for exercising enumerated powers. So in order to conduct foreign relations or provide for army and navy, they can create laws to that end. Again, know your clauses supremacy clause, that's the constitution is the highest law in the land. Meaning it trumps the state constitution and any charter, local charter. The state and local charters and laws must follow the constitution. Concurrent powers, know this one, it's between the federal and state government. So concurrent powers, the federalist state government can both tax, borrow money, establish courts, charter banks and spend money for general welfare, which is kind of vague. But those are things that both federal and state governments do. State powers denied by the constitution. Know this one state favoritism cannot do that, we can't say I'm from Michigan. And we prefer Wisconsin over Ohio, can't do that or titles of nobility. Not allowed, and that's not allowed in the federal government as well, bills of attainder. Which is not allowed in either federal or state government, which is a proclamation punishing a person or group without a trial, so just making a law saying that what this person did was wrong and they're going to pay for it. Ex post facto laws. This is where a law comes in and says anyone who did this the last ten years now has to go to jail, you can't do that. You can't make something illegal from the past. U S Supreme Court settles all disputes between states and the federal government. And challenges to the constitution, full faith and credit clause, again, know your clauses. This is states within the US have to respect other states laws. Provided they're constitutional, of course. And not just laws, records, judicial proceedings, all of that stuff, so if you're convicted in one state, you can't go to another state thinking you will not be extradited or in trouble. Interstate compact, just read through these and just know the gist of it. This is important, local governments have no power under the constitution. So the constitution does not mention local governments. Local governments are a creature of the state. And it's up to the states to give local governments their power, but it isn't dealt with in the constitution. Some of these terms we'll deal more with later. Federal grants will deal more with later, but no categorical grants versus block grants. Programmatic requests are earmarks. Okay, so civil liberties, again, civil liberties, when you think that instantly you should think Bill of Rights as well as later amendments in the constitution, but especially initially the Bill of Rights. So fourteenth amendment. Says that the Bill of Rights applies to the actions of states, not just the federal government. So that expands the Bill of Rights, even though upon reading the constitution, one would assume that oftentimes you will see these amendments come in later to just make the point very clear. And this is the due process clause, equal treatment clauses have to be respected by the states. Okay, selective incorporation. Trying to go through this a bit more quickly, so you know what to focus on, but go through everything at least once. Separation of church and state. The establishment clause, what does that mean, it says that the federal government cannot have a religion nor promote any religion. There's a separation of the church and the state that's from the beginning. The framers did not want a theocracy or a church run state, as was the case in Europe for many hundreds of years. They wanted they were part of the Enlightenment period to get away from that. The free exercise clause is saying that you can practice whatever you wish. But it's not absolute government interests can outweigh free exercise rights, so you can't say, oh, it's because my religion that I killed my neighbor. Lemon test, know this one. So this is from a Supreme Court case to measure whether there's a violation of separation of church and state. The First Amendment, so must have secular, meaning nonreligious purpose, must not advance or prohibit a religion. And must not entangle government with religion, so know that. Freedom of speech and the press, alien and sedition acts, these were brought in under John Adams, the president, which censored criticism of the government removed before any judicial interpretation most likely was going to be thrown out. Was very unpopular, which led to John Adams serving probably led to him serving just one term and Thomas Jefferson being elected. Similar issue espionage and sedition acts of nineteen seventeen nineteen eighteen, this is during World War One. And this was clarified through some Supreme Court cases, Shank v. U.S. There's the clear and present danger test. And another hint hint part of a matching maybe Supreme Court cases, so make sure if there's a Supreme Court case in this. Study guide that you know the basics, just real basics of what it is. Okay. So unprotected speech, know the difference between libel and slander. District of Columbia v. Heller, again, go over your Supreme Court cases. And this ruled that individual has a right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in a militia for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense and hunting and such. Search and seizure, the Fourth Amendment, police must obtain warrants for searches. However, warrantless searches are allowed if reasonable suspicion with consent of a person investigated. And in situations with no expectation of privacy like a public place. Or a field, farmer's field. Even if it's private property, it's a lot of loopholes there. Miranda v. Arizona, that's Fifth Amendment right against self-incrimination requires law enforcement to advise the suspect of the rights remain silent, we all know that, obtain an attorney, etc. Know that one exclusionary rule map the Ohio. That prohibits the use of illegally obtained evidence in a criminal trial, it's very important. However, in later cases, there's some exceptions have been made for good faith mistakes. But generally, if some item of evidence is obtained illegally, it cannot be used. Griswold v. Connecticut, states cannot ban contraception contraceptive sales. Know that one Roe v. Wade, right to privacy under due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment extended to woman's decision to have an abortion balanced against three factors. The state's interest in regulating abortions, protecting women's health and protecting potential human life. So no Roe v. Wade, that's gonna be coming up. In Supreme Court cases, probably next year, very, very much in the public domain and it's gonna be all over the news. Lawrence v. Texas, that's right to privacy extends to private sexual behavior, know that one. Obergefell v. Hodges, twenty fifteen fundamental right to marry is guaranteed to same-sex couples. By both the due process clause and equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Know that one. The USA Patriot Act, go through that, understand just the gist of what that was and some of the controversy. Okay, civil rights, we're going through this rather quickly, it's my cat is choking on something, I apologize. The slave trade ended eighteen oh eight, but demand for slaves increases, you have, if you remember Eli Whitney and the cotton gin, and so this massive push for cotton coming from the United States, it was a cash crop. And people made their fortunes in the South as well as the North. At the North, they would take the raw cotton and make it into fabrics and textiles. So the demand in the South increased. Missouri Compromise of eighteen twenty, Missouri was granted statehood as a slave state, remember there's this balance between slave states and free states since the founding. And they're they're usually there was a strong push to make sure that there was an even number of slave states, even number of free states. And basically with the Missouri Compromise. They prohibited the rest of the giant Louisiana Purchase that Jefferson had made. And the North could not be slave states and the South could be. However, that was challenged in eighteen fifty seven. No Dred Scott v. Sanford, and that said, Missouri Compromise was declared unconstitutional, any state can be a slave state if they want to and declared slaves are not U.S. citizens and can't file a court case. And that was a dark day for the U.S. Thirteenth Amendment. Know that one, this, you know, after the Emancipation Proclamation, this was the actual amendment. And that nullified slavery or involuntary servitude, however, except for punishment for crimes, which we looked at in one of our documentaries. Initially, there was the black codes. Right after, just when reconstruction started. But the Jim Crow laws here is more with to focus on those were what promoted segregation after reconstruction. And those really created the segregation systems in the South. Okay, know the difference between Fourteenth Amendment and Fifteenth Amendment, Fifteen Amendment specifically granted African American men the right to vote, but did not include women, which upset many suffragists at the time. Civil Rights Act of eighteen seventy five. Was put in during the reconstruction era, kind of to make sure that these black codes were not were made unconstitutional. And that was unfortunately overturned in eighteen eighty three, setting the stage for segregation in the South. Reconstruction. Ended in eighteen seventy seven. Again, Jim Crow laws, state local laws designed to enforce segregation of blacks from whites. And this is pretty much the white southerners regained their dominance. By denying African Americans' basic social, economic and civil rights. And you also had at this time, just prior to that eighteen seventy two, if you remember, you had the amnesty law, which former Confederates were now allowed to vote again, etc. So the old power base in the South regained power, if you remember after the war, they couldn't vote, they couldn't hold office and that was forgiven. Eighteen ninety six, Plessy v. Ferguson upheld the constitutionality of racial segregation laws for public facilities as long as they were separate but equal, obviously that was a dark day in our history as well. Suffrage movement, know that's the fight for women's rights, especially voting, Nineteenth Amendment, know that nineteen twenty women were allowed to or given the right to vote. Brown v. Board of Education, know these major Supreme Court cases. That was a trial of five cases and struck down separate but equal in segregation in schooling. Hernandez v. Texas nineteen fifty four, know that one jury should include other Mexican Americans, it cannot be trees appears means other your ethnic group and race should be considered. Caesar Chavez. Go through these. And go through the Native American civil rights, especially the Dawes Act. And that was very instrumental in ending the communal ownership of the land and it was kind of a scheme in order to kind of break up the large, not large, much very much smaller now. Lands held by natives and break them up individually and then buy them back from individuals. And after that, if you remember the amount of land owned by Native Americans. Was one third within so many years. Korematsu v. U.S., another dark day for our history. And the Supreme Court, they ruled the internment camps for Japanese citizens was constitutional. They were awarded a civil liberties through the Civil Liberties Act nineteen eighty eight reparations, however, it's about twenty grand. About forty five thousand today. Not too much. Okay, know the difference between the Senate and the House of Representatives, I'm not gonna get into that. Know the different powers of the branches, lawmaking is the number one power given to Congress. Gerrymandering, you know what that is, the Speaker of the House, most powerful position in the House, third in line for the presidency. And this is nominated by the majority party. Know the types of committees. Go through the lawmaking process. My cat sneezing. And know the War Powers Resolution Act. And impeachment, understand that process. So the House of Representatives votes on impeachment. And so they vote to impeach, as we've seen happen twice with the former president, however. The impeachment goes to the Senate for the trial, Senate acts as the court essentially. And the Senate needs to vote to convict two thirds of super majority and that's never happened. And I didn't update this, there's only two presidents impeached, well, actually three. So Andrew Johnson, Bill Clinton and Donald Trump, who was impeached twice. And then were convicted by the Senate. Confirmation of presidential appointees, fifty one senators require, except for generally Supreme Court, you need sixty. Not always you can do that, what they call the nuclear option and just do a simple majority. These things just know the basics, because we're gonna be going more in depth in later chapters, so political parties understand just the basics. And know the Government Accountability Office and Congressional Budget Office, what they are about, so GAO. That's audits, evaluation. Investigative services for the U.S. Congress. And it's the Supreme Audit Institution for the U.S. Federal Government. So it used to be the General Accounting Office, now it's Governmental Accountability Office, because they do a lot more than just investigative accounting. Congressional Budget Office, if you remember, the Office of Management and Budget, which used to be the Bureau of Budget that was under the President's Executive Office. Congress felt that they need to have their own body to look at budgets put forth by the president. And have their own forecasts and would be more impartial, so you have the CBO as well as the Office of Management and Budget. Okay, we raced through that and we only have one person in the room, so any questions Pablo?
No, no, I don't, Professor.
Okay, so it should be fairly easy and if you have any questions prior, I'm gonna post this in the module right now or once it's loaded and all of that good stuff. Just let me know and then you have it'll go live tomorrow. Well, at midnight and then you have until eleven fifty nine on Saturday to complete the exam. Got it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so good luck on the exam, everyone. Okay, okay, so good luck on the exam, everyone.